Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to begin the private city council Tuesday, June 18th. Council meeting asks that you stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation given by Councilor Boone tonight.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for the rain that's falling that's refreshing our area. We just pray that you would continue to bless our land, bless those who are fighting away from us, bless those who are working for our city and for our county to make things better. I pray that your peace would be upon this room tonight and that you would grant wisdom to those of us who are working towards bettering this city's government and the life of the people who live there. Just guide us, give us wisdom in decision making. I pray that you bless our night in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We have a public hearing here tonight for one item, resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement. Is anyone here like the speaker on behalf of this item? Anyone for it? Anyone against it? Joel, you want to speak now or you want to just bring it up during the meeting or you prefer to just go and get it out the way now?
Mr. Wood, I can speak to those just to give you process because we've done it for a number of years, but that function has basically been transferred to the police department and they are responsible for handling that. As you'll recall, it's really just a matter of authorizing the cutting of those properties and the council action is required to do that. Those have been advertised and the folks have been notified that they're in violation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duke. I heard him say that that function is now in the police department. Mayor, and you can help me and maybe the rest of the council members here, who will be representing and will the police chief be representing in the council chambers when something like this come up now or will Mr. Wilson still be the person to call upon?
Well, if it's, I guess, a very serious matter where we need to have Mr. Wilson in here, we can, but you know, I think most of this is normal housekeeping, but I guess basically, normal day-to-day or council meeting, housekeeping events, it'd be the Chief Thompson and myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, the public hearing is closed on that item. That item will be the first item on our agenda. We get ready to go into our agenda. Meeting is called to order. Characterized in modest faith, which is confidence that actions rooted in good character will yield a best outcome, even when I cannot see how. We have approval of minutes for the city council meeting, June the 4th, 2013, and work session, June 11th, 2013. Have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor of approving those minutes signify by raising your right hand. And those minutes approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on any item that's on tonight's agenda, please come to the microphone now. No one? Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. And I'm going to agree, rain is a good thing since it's out here. You know, last council meeting, I even talked a bit about it, but just want to say good evening, councilors. Looking at the agenda tonight, items five and six are to declare Mr. Autry and Mr. Davis as non-responsible bidders on the hayfield lease agreements. These gentlemen, these gentlemen have withdrawn their bids in writing and they will come, this will come back before you sometime in the fall. In the meantime, we will be reviewing these hayfield contracts, makes, makes certain it's beneficial for the city to the utmost. Items eight and nine are budgeted positions or, and are filling vacancies that have come about due to retirements or resignations. On item 12, it's the TAP program. I believe Joel Duke has explained this in an email to everyone and just a reminder, it's an 80/20 match and, but it's a very good way for the city of Prattville to leverage federal dollars and extend our own dollars. But on item 13, you've heard me talk several times about centralized purchasing for the city of Prattville and if Prattville does group up with this H-GAC buy group, it is a group of communities have joined together to benefit from the buying power from a larger group. While this is not actually the central purchasing that I have talked about, discussed, it is a similar concept, and ask that you please move forward on all these items. And on a more carefree note, we have several events coming up in the very near future. On Friday evening, Parks and Recs is holding a movie Under the Stars event on the upper level at Cooters Pond. They will be showing Madagascar Three, Europe's Most Wanted. The movie begins at dark and I hope you all join me for this free family fun event. And we have, we have invited other elected officials to come out, including Emory County's Stephanie Smoke, so hopefully she might even be there. Water flow was tested on Splash Pad on Friday. Staff has been trained with filtration system, controls as well. And as you know, we'll all be cutting the ribbing on this new attraction on July the 2nd after this body concludes council business that evening. Splash Pad will be open to public on July the 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. during the Independence Day event in Pratt Park and we're, we're going to be clearing anyone out at 3:00 p.m. in order for the fire department, the fireworks experts to get in there and set up the evening show. I want to thank all of our departments that worked on this effort. I'm not going to list them individually, but because I don't want to mistakenly leave anyone, anyone out, our residents are very excited about this and we should be very proud of this project and its successful completion because then when you have 28 million votes was what it took for us to win, I think that is a very big, very large number that will not be repeated because we all know this Coca-Cola challenge, they, was where we got the funding, the $100,000 to fund this project. They have actually changed some of the rules again and so I don't think you'll ever see 28 million votes be winning this contest. But just as a reminder, we're honoring our Vietnam veterans as grand marshals in our Independence Day events. And I just want to say a big thank you for everyone on this committee and I hope to see all the councilors up there. This committee that has pulled together to help make this event possible has been very valuable to the city of Prattville. They have a lot of civic leaders and you pretty much name it from civic leaders, just to some of our Vietnam veterans or American Legion, just several different councilors, you know, sitting on the board. So I think it's been a very good event for the city of Prattville. But another reminder I'd like to give is that last year we had our first budget hearing and as we move closer and closer to budget time, we have already planned to have another budget hearing. The date as of yet has not been determined, but I think that like I mentioned, last year was the first year of that. I felt like it was a very beneficial exercise that we went through. I was actually to pick up a little bit, a few more things inside the budget I had not really caught on before, but I think it was very beneficial and I look forward to having it again this year and we'll definitely keep you guys up to speed on that date. Ladies and gentlemen, as we close in on the 4th of July, I'd like to make a personal comment if I may. Our federal government, our state government and this local government has been analyzed, examined and dissected for various reasons. In some cases, these concerns have been warranted, but my personal thoughts have been, have not wavered. This type, this type, this style of government with our checks and balances is the best ever. Counselor, our constitution was signed in ink, but I believe it is still being signed each and every day in blood. It is still being defended every day with blood, sweat and tears by our armed forces, our first responders, by citizens of every type, including you, because we are part of what our founding fathers had envisioned for them and for us. Counselors, we're part of the checks and balances of self-government. This body is part of the best ever government on earth, so help us God. Even though it seems that we might be living in a paradox from time to time, I'm proud to say that I've asked to be a part of this. It reminds me of a phrase, and as everybody up here knows, I'm a, I like my phrases, but be careful what you ask for because you might just get it and we have. And, and I think, I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish over the last several months. I have rehung the constitution on the east wall of these council chambers as a reminder of our history and of our sacrifices that have been made and that are still being made for the best ever government throughout this land. Thank you for being a part of this solution, part of the checks and balances of self-government for this community, this great city, this special little place we call home. Now that said, I will step down off my soapbox and finish up on the items before this governing body this evening. Item two is the lodging fee. As I shared with you previously, we have many plans that were commissioned to achieve some really great projects and there are many other potential great projects we can entertain, but we do not have a dedicated revenue source for them. And if you do pass this this evening, it will be dedicated for those. I see benefits in this ordinance for the hotel owners, our citizens and our governmental bodies. I see this as a win-win-win. This remains as economic development issues and no matter how it's been presented, I must reiterate this is to fund capital projects only. I've talked with numerous hotel owners and would like to ask this body to amend the ordinance to begin August 1st in order to accommodate the computer changes that must be made at hotels. I ask that you move forward on this item. I ask that you also move forward on item 14. On November the 6th, 2012, this elected body empowered me to negotiate this item. I come back before this body having completed that task. This is a necessary step to help finalize wastewater's future needs. With that said, Mr. President, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council members have any comments, questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
At this time, we have reports from the council and special committees. Council Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Sterns?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Boone?
Yes, sir.
At this time, we ask our finance director to come forward and give us a report on the status of the city finances.
Provided everyone a financial report for the month of May, should be in front of you. The first sheet is the revenue report. You will see that most of all these items, we are 58.33% through the year on the revenue side. Overall, we are at 75.88% of our budget, so we're well ahead of where we should be on our budget, budgeted revenues. There are a couple of items that are lagging. Funds and for, forfeitures is at 46.61% and tobacco tax is at 52.14%. So those have been pretty much lagging a good portion of the year and they are continuing to do so. Do not think that's a cause for concern. Those are fairly small portions of the budget. The larger portions and more important portions of the budget are actually running ahead of schedule. The next sheet is the tax breakdown comparison for the month of May, showing how the month of May compared line by line on the taxes compared to last May. The next set of sheets is the May expense report by department. You will see we're 66.67% through the year on the expense side. Most all departments are running right in line where they should be or actually spending less of their budget than they, than we are through the year, so it's very positive. The next sheet is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. You will see that year-to-date, we are actually in the black, $447,000. That being said, there are several capital outlay items, several, several large projects that have not been completed for this year that were budgeted, that's, that's why there's such a large amount in the black. Those, I think, blue, those projects have been started, but it's going to take a while. They're long-term, like 12-month projects. The next sheet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. You will see that we, year-to-date, we are in the black, $2,021.08. You will see the month of May, we are in the red. We actually brought in less than we spent. That is due to some capital outlay items that were, that were purchasing some new trucks for the sanitation department and some of those came in, one of those came in during the month of May, so obviously that's a large out, large expense during the month. The next sheet is actually a new sheet that I'm going to start providing quarterly for the council. And this is actually a report on the city's group health insurance fund to show what's going on with that fund. You'll see year-to-date, the fund has brought in $2,960,000 and has spent in claims costs and the cost from the clinic, $2,099,000. So the insurance fund has actually brought in $861,000 more than it spent. However, one thing of note, at 9:30, 2012, the general fund actually owed $671,000 into the group health fund. That's part of the reason that you have that large amount. And as I have on the sheet, the balance for the group health fund at 9:30, 2012 was $1,100,000. The next sheet actually has the current balance of that fund, which is $1.8 million. And again, that is, we're, the, the general fund is caught up on its payments to the general, to the group health fund. As I said before, the next sheet is the bank balances comparative, 531, 2011, 531, 2012, 531, 2013. As you can see at the bottom, the bank balances for all city accounts, 930, 2011 was $517,000. That balance is now $11,339,000. Obviously, that sounds like a huge number, but a lot of those funds are dedicated to specific purposes and locked down, so those are not just random funds that we can go and do a project with. The next sheet is the citywide accounts payable and debt balances for 531, 2011, 2012 and 2013. You will see that 530, 531, 2011, that balance was $59.9 million. That balance today, at 531, 2013 is $50.4 million. That's a decrease of $9.4 million within two years. That's very positive. Sorry, one, one more thing. I know the lodging fee is on the agenda for tonight and I'd actually spoken with Mayor Gillespie yesterday about the fee. I'd kind of been thinking about how we needed to handle those revenues and those expenditures and, as well as the bank account, as those funds would be set aside in a separate bank account. If that does pass, the suggestion that I gave the mayor was that we actually set those funds, the revenues and the expenditures in the capital projects fund and not in the general fund. It further separates those funds from the rest of the budget and make sure that they are not commingled with any other funds that come in and make sure that it's used for the proper purpose, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Does anyone have any questions, council team?
The debt reserve fund is right at 2.7 million and our next payment is due November.
That's correct.
Are we on track to have that money come in to cover that debt?
I've already deposited another, an additional $400,000, which puts us over $3 million in that account and the November payment is less than $3 million, so we're, we've already got the funds for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Striplin.
One question, Mr. Mosley.
Absolutely.
Going back to the group health fund, in trying to look at the statements here, what you're telling us is, I believe, that the city has paid in full through the end of May, everything that, that was owed.
Correct.
This other information was just based on September 30th and just for informational purposes?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay.
Just to kind of show you what, you know, what was owed and therefore that was actually counted in, the general fund contributions for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments from Mr. Mosley? We thank you, Mr. Mosley, and I'm sure you all appreciate getting these various reports. We, we give them electronically, so that gives you plenty of time to look over them. That way it kind of shortens the questions and if you have any questions of any particular nature, it allows you also the opportunity to meet with him prior to this meeting and we appreciate that. Thank you. We'll move along in our agenda for tonight. Resolution number one is to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Council Chamberlain, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes and mosquitoes and other vermin, it may cause the further spread of weeds, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property and may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas the city council of the city of Prattville declared in Resolution Book 2013, page 066, that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at various addresses in the city of Prattville constituted a public nuisance and set a public hearing to discuss said nuisances. And whereas, notice as required by Section 116762 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, was provided in the Prattville progress by certified mail and by signage on the subject property. And whereas the Prattville Police Department has inspected the properties listed in Resolution Book 2013, page 66, adopted on May 21st, 2013, and determined that the public nuisance still exists. And whereas the city council of the city of Prattville held the required public hearing at 6 o'clock p.m. on June 18th, 2013, for meeting the owners of same properties listed in Resolution Book 2013, page 66, to present evidence, objections and protests regarding the proposed removal of weeds. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. 1370 Cooper Avenue, 230 Radburn Way, 403 New Moon Drive, 103 Lilac Drive, 209 Camellia Drive, 211 Camellia Drive, 209 J Street, 1805 Jenny Drive, 1001 Upper Kingston Road, vacant lot on Black Oak Court and Willow Oak Court, 434 Water Street, 106 Guilford Lane, 518 Jasmine Trail, 102 Gray Drive, 115 Gray Drive, 307, 307 Hunting Ridge Road. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the city of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the city council following their removal. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bowles. Been a discussion on this item. All in favor of this item signify by raising your right hand and this resolution passes. Item number two of ordinance to amend the city code, Division 5, imposition of additional transient occupancy tax, Section 38-211. This was held from our June 4th, 2013 meeting. There being a discussion on this item. Yes?
I have an amendment to read.
May.
I amend that line 27 be changed to August the 1st, 2013. So moved.
We have an amendment to this resolution on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Sterns. Been a discussion on the amended resolution. All in, all in favor of the amendment signify by raising your right hand. And the amended portion passes. Being a further discussion on this ordinance. Council Striplin?
Yes, sir. I'd, I'd like to ask the body, what is the position, assuming someone has booked a room in September, they've confirmed, the motel owner has confirmed the room and guaranteed them the price? Is there any consideration been given to grandfathering those reservations that are already on the books today?
Mayor, you may speak.
Thank you. I did bring a similar question, not the exact question, up to some of the hotel owners and they told me that this 30-day window, the ones that I've discussed, talked with, determined this 30-day window would allow them for that. But I think actually the, the average person calls up and asks for, whether it's a hamburger at Mickey McDonald's or a tire at, at a different shop or whatever, they ask the price, but not what are the taxes. So I, but the response from the hotel owners I've talked with said that 30-day window would allow them for that adjustment. But again, there's a lot of unknowns in that, but that has been the response.
Did you talk to everyone?
Being a further discussion on this item. All in favor of this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance passes. Item number three is to grant a retail beer license off premises only and retail table wine licenses off premises only to Chateaure Patel of Amchee LLC doing business at, as Corner Market. This was held also from our February 19th meeting. We've been a discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution passes also. Item number four is to authorize demolition of dilapidated structure located at 944 Newton Street at a cost of $3,800 and to wire contract to Alvin Thomas Incorporated to complete demolition. Councilor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas, whereas under the authority of the Title 11, Chapter 53B of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, the Prattville Planning Department declared the structure of, at 945 Newton Street to be unsafe and a public issuance. And whereas, January 22nd, 2013, the Prattville Planning Department ordered the demolition of the structure at 945 Newton Street by March 8th, 2013. And whereas the planning, Prattville Planning Department ordered, was delivered by a certificate mailed to the last known property owner and to all parties having interest in the property. And whereas on appeal was requested by Mr. Kenneth Reagan, a public hearing was held March the 5th, 2013, at which time the city council received comments from Mr. Reagan. And whereas no repairs have been made to the structure and it remains unsafe and a public nuisance. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the structure located at 945 Newton Street is unsafe and a public nuisance that must be remained or demolished, repaired or demolished as instructed by the Prattville Planning Department orders. Be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized and empowered to remove the unsafe structure at 945 Newton Street and so present the city council with a detailed list of the cost of removal. Be it further resolved that the contract in the amount of $3,800 is awarded to Alvin Thomas Incorporated and said funds are hereby appropriated and, and moved from FY 2013 budget line item, Planning Department, dilapidated houses. I so move.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Boone. Been a discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution passes. Item number five is to declare Raymar Autry a non-responsible bidder and award of an agricultural lease agreement for hayfield tracks for the wastewater department. Council Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville wastewater department has approximately 300 acres of hayfield tracks it wishes to lease. And whereas bids for said lease were accepted through April 19th, 2013, and two bids were received with Raymar Autry being the highest bidder. And whereas the city council of the city of Prattville authorized the mayor to enter into an agricultural lease agreement with Raymar Autry in Resolution Book 2013, page 56, on May 7th, 2013. And whereas, Raymar Autry notified the city- And whereas, Raymar Autry notified the city in writing on June seventh, two thousand and thirteen, that he is no longer interested in leasing said hayfield tracks. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the bid received from Raymar Autry for the lease of said hayfield tracks is hereby rejected. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand? And this resolution passes. Item number six is to declare Jimmy Davis a non-responsible bidder in the amount of an agr- in the award of an agricultural lease agreement for hayfield tracks for the Waste Department. Counselor Chambers, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Wastewater Department has approximately three hundred acres of hayfield tracks it wishes to lease. And whereas bids for said lease were accepted through April nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and two bids were received with Jimmy Davis being the second highest bidder. And whereas Jimmy Davis notified the city in writing on June seventh, that he, two thousand and thirteen, that he is no longer interested in leasing said hayfield tracks. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the bid received from Jimmy Davis for the lease of said hayfield tracks is hereby rejected. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion? Counselor Bowles.
Will this go back out for a rebid, or will we take the next bidder?
Mayor.
Actually, what we're going to, the first go around, we looked at having it all put up for bid as the three hundred acres, and what we've actually found is that it's really a larger track than the average hay cutter around here can handle. And so what we'll probably bring them back to you guys in the next several months is separate tracks, so that will have multiple bidders on it, and it's more suitable for their equipment and their personnel.
In a couple of months, hay season will be just about over. Is somebody cutting that hay? Is that the original person that's cut it all these years still keeping it up for us?
Yes, sir. We're getting it taken care of there, and, because some of it is, some of it's off an old garbage dump, some of it's, some of our industrial park, and some of it's some other areas, so, but yes, sir, it is being taken care of.
Great. Thank you.
Be in a further discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand? This item passes. Item number seven is to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for services with Centos Corporation for Employee Uniform Service. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas still bids were requested for bid number zero one three dash zero zero six for new employee uniforms, shop towels, mats, and mop handles heads pursuant to the General Competitive Bid Law, Section forty-one dash sixteen dash fifty, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five as amended. And whereas four bids were received, opened, and read in public on May twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, and Centos Corporation was the lowest responsible bidder. And whereas the City Council awarded bid number zero one three dash zero zero six to Centos Corporation for a three-year contract on June fourth, two thousand and thirteen. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor to execute a contract for services with Centos Corporation for a period of three years for employee uniform service. Mr. President, I so move.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. There being a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand? And this resolution passes. Item number eight is a resolution to authorize the hiring of four police officers to fill budgeted vacancies in the Police Department in an annual cost not to exceed two hundred seven thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars. Counselor Chambers, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need to hire four police officers to fill vacancies in that department. And whereas the City Council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill vacant positions. And whereas the annual cost per employee will not exceed fifty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars for salary and benefits, whereas these are budgeted positions in the Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring four police officers, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY two thousand and thirteen budget line items, Police Department, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a discussion on this resolution. Just have one question, Chief. Does these four officers bring you back up to the number that you initially started when you came in, these four? What is that number? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand? This resolution passes. Resolution number nine is to authorize the hiring of one certified firefighter/paramedic to fill a budgeted vacancy in the Fire Department in an annual cost not to exceed fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has a need to hire one certified firefighter/paramedic to fill a vacancy in that department. And whereas the City Council has adopted a resolution requiring counselors authorized to fill vacant positions. And whereas the annual cost will not exceed fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars for salary and benefits. And whereas this is a budgeted position in the Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seven dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one certified firefighter/paramedic, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item, Fire Department slash salary, wages, worker comp, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Human Resource Department is authorized to impede the hiring process as budgeted. I so move.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Boone. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand? This resolution passes. Item number ten is a resolution to amend Resolution Book ninety-eight B, page one forty-four, authorizing the city to enter into agreement with the State of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for transportation improvement grants. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville adopted Resolution Book ninety-eight B, page one forty-four, authorizing the city to enter into agreements with the State of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for transportation improvement grants. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Resolution Book ninety-eight B, page one forty-four, is amended to authorize Willie L. Wood, Jr., Council President, and Bill Gillespie, Jr., Mayor, and all other necessary and proper representatives of the city to execute and deliver or attest a signature required on any document reasonably necessary to carry out the intent of Resolution Book ninety-eight B, page one forty-four. Mr. President, I so move.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand? This item passes. Item number eleven is to enter into an agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to provide engineering services in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed eight thousand dollars for the resurfacing of McQueen Smith Road project, number STP zero eight dash seven eight one two. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has identified the need to resurface McQueen Smith Road south of Cobb's Ford Road, and whereas the City of Prattville has entered into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to have this work performed. And whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation requires construction, engineering, and inspection services for this work. And whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation has approved Sane Associates Incorporated to perform these duties. And whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will reimburse the City of Prattville for eighty percent of said cost. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to perform engineering services for resurfacing McQueen Smith Road south of Cobb's Ford Road in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed eight thousand dollars, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and thirteen budget line item capital project fund slash miscellaneous contract services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. Mr. President, I so move.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chambers. There being a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand? And this resolution passes. Item number twelve is authorized the mayor to make application for FY two thousand and thirteen Transportation Alternatives Program funds from the Alabama Department of Transportation and Montgomery MPO. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville's two thousand and ten comprehensive plan established the overall transportation strategies of considering all transportation users and support alternative modes of travel, calling for additional non-vehicular and pedestrian facilities throughout the city. And whereas the City of Prattville established a complete streets policy by Resolution Book two thousand and ten, page eleven, adopted on May second, two thousand and ten. And whereas the city has previously identified the need for sidewalks and other pedestrian facilities on the streets serving the Prattville Elementary and Intermediate Schools, and submitted a request for funding to the Alabama Department of Transportation under the Transportation Enhancement and Safe Routes to School program. And whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation and the Montgomery Metropolitan Planning Organization have notified the City of Prattville of the availability of funds under the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen Transportation Alternative Program. And whereas the proposed pedestrian facilities serving the Prattville Elementary and Intermediate Schools are eligible activities in the current application period. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that, one, the City of Prattville submits a fiscal year two thousand and thirteen Transportation Alternative Program application to the Alabama Department of Transportation and Montgomery Metropolitan Planning Organization for funding in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand, sorry, one hundred, yeah, ninety-two dollars for installation of sidewalks and pedestrian facilities. Two, the City of Prattville commits forty-six thousand twenty-three dollars for the required twenty percent local matching funds. And three, that Bill Gillespie, Jr., in his capacity as mayor of the City of Prattville, is hereby authorized and empowered to submit said applications on behalf of the city and take other such action as may be necessary to obtain the requested financial assistance. Mr. President, I so move.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Do we have any discussions? All in favor signify by raising your right hand? This resolution passes. Item number thirteen is to authorize the mayor to enter into an interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with H-gac by. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville desires to enter into an intercoastal contract for cooperative purchasing with H-gac by for competitive capital purchases. And whereas Houston Galveston Area Council, H-gac, is a regional council of governmental operating under the laws of Texas and governed by a board of elected officials. And whereas H-gac board makes their purchases contracts available to local governments nationwide through H-gac by. And whereas governmental entities can join said purchasing cooperative by executing an interlo- interlocal, interlocal, sorry, contract to, I lost my space, hang on a second, in H-gac by. And whereas the State of Alabama Department of Examiners of Public Accounts has reviewed a competitive process used by Houston Galveston Area Council and has approved the competitive bid process used by H-gac through all, through November thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the City of Prattville is authorized to enter into an interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with H-gac by. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute all documents necessary to enter into said interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with H-gac by. I so move.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We have a second? Do we have any discussion? Mayor, I just got one question on this contract. Pretty much it makes their purchasing contract available, would that be available at no cost?
Yes, sir. I mean, I think the main item that they were probably possibly looking at, if it was some kind of buyer equipment or something on it, it's just a cost saving as we purchase it.
Thank you. All in favor of this item signify by raising your right hand? This resolution passes. Item number fourteen is a resolution to affirm the intent to purchase additional city property for the wastewater department, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement of sale. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the wastewater department is in need of additional acreage to apply sludge, a byproduct of treating wastewater. And whereas in Resolution Book two thousand and twelve, page one forty-six, on November the sixth, two thousand and twelve, the City Council authorized the mayor to negotiate the terms and conditions for the purchase of additional property for the wastewater department, and reported back to the City Council the results of the same. And whereas the mayor has negotiated the terms and conditions for the purchase of the Rice Estate property, and has reported said terms back to the City Council. And whereas an agreement for sale has been prepared for the purchase of the Rice Estate property contingent upon the City of Prattville obtaining favorable financing, approval, and/or resolution of the City Council, and approval of Judge John B. Bush. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby affirms its intent to purchase the right property, subject to the terms and conditions set out above. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand? And this item passes. Item number fifteen is an ordinance to amend authorization of the sale of draft beer on premises consumption only by retail licensees of the Alabama Beverage Control Board to within the corporate limits and the police jurisdiction of the City of Prattville. Counselor Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Section One of Ordinance Book two thousand and thirteen, page twenty-two, is hereby amended as follows. Section One, the sale of draft beer for on-premises consumption only by retail licensees of Alabama Alcohol Beverage Control Board within the corporal limits of the police jurisdiction of City of Prattville is hereby authorized and shall be legal, subject to the following conditions. A, draft beer shall be sold and dispensed in open containers for consumption on the premises where it is sold. B, draft beer cannot be repackaged for sale. C, no draft beer may be removed from their premises where it is sold and dispensed. This ordinance shall be effective upon passage, approval, and publication where it is otherwise provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion by Counselor Sterns? Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Striplin. In order for this item to be considered tonight, the rules must be suspended unanimously. Do we have a motion to suspend the rule?
Motion.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor of suspending the rule signify by raising your right hand? The rules have been suspended. Be in a discussion on this item. Counselor Bowles.
Just for clarification, exactly what, I realize this is a big section, but what actually in the section was amended that has changed from the original?
Only thing that has changed is incorporated the police jurisdiction. That's the only thing that's changed.
Any other discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand? This item passes. Item number sixteen is to order surplus various weapons from the Police Department. Counselor Chambers, please.
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the weapons listed in Attachment A and Attachment B are hereby declared surplus of the Police Department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to destroy said weapons listed in Attachment A. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said weapons listed in Attachment B to Gulf State's distributors and deposit the proceeds into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sterns. This item also must have the rule suspended unanimously in order to be considered. This item also must have the rule suspended unanimously in order to be considered. Have a motion.
Motion.
Have a motion to suspend the rules. Do we have a second? Second. All in favor of suspending the rule signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. This item is open for discussion. Any discussion on this item? Councilor Boone.
May I just ask the chief, just as a housekeeping matter, why we are destroying these instead of, is there a reason that we are not reselling?
The ones to be destroyed are the cheaper, used in most crimes on the street. And the ones that are being sold are brand name guns that would draw more money.
Good deal. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance passes. Our next item is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle from the police department. Councilor Chamberlain.
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the police department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department, a nineteen ninety-eight Ford Crown Victoria. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle on govdeals.com and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. So move, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilor Sterns. This item must have the rule suspended also in order to be considered tonight. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Bowles, second.
Second.
Second, by Councilor Sterns. All in favor of suspending the rule signify by raising your right hand. The rules have been suspended. There be in a discussion on this ordinance. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance passes. We have one item tonight that comes from the floor. I ask Councilor Boone to read this item.
Whereas the City of Prattville is eligible to submit a grant application to the Mid-South Resource Conservation and Development Council, the RCND. And whereas the City of Prattville desires to apply for funds to assist with parks, facilities, improvements, and therefore be it resolved by the City of Prattville as follows. Section one, that the City of Prattville submit a grant application to Mid-South RCND Council for funding assistance. Section two, that the City of Prattville and its partners provide an incidental in-kind service as matched towards the project. Section three, that Bill Gillespie, Jr., in his capacity as mayor of the City of Prattville, is hereby authorized and directed to submit said application on behalf of the city and take other such actions as may be necessary to obtain the requested financial assistance. So move, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Second, by Councilor Brown. Being that this resolution was brought from the floor, the rules will need to be suspended on it also unanimously to be considered tonight. Do we have a motion to suspend the rule? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? All in favor of suspending the rule signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended unanimously. Are there any discussions on this resolution? Councilor Boone.
Yes, sir. Since it did come up so quickly, I wanted to just give the council kind of a heads-up about what's going on. We are under a deadline to submit this grant, which is why it came suddenly without really much warning. Basically, this is a no-match situation, other than maybe some small in-kind services that our city could easily provide. So I am asking for your support on this. The money would go back into the Leisure Services Department, so just basically maintenance-type money. We're looking at about fifteen thousand dollars possibly receiving. So I do ask for your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this resolution from the floor? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution passes. At this time, that exhausts our agenda. Anyone in the audience who'd like to make comments to this body, please come forward at this time. On any other item at this time, please come forward. Mayor, you having closing comments?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank everybody sitting up here. You guys have done a lot of hard and a lot of good work for this community. I want to thank you for that. But as always in closing, I always want to thank all the city employees that I've mentioned to them numerous times, the perception this city is viewed considerably through them and their departments. But thank you and hopefully I'll see you on July the second, if not sooner.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Striplin. Councilor Brown.
Yes, sir. There'll be a Streets Committee meeting held on June twenty-fifth at four P.M., the City Hall Annex.
Councilor Sterns.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Chamberlain.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Bowles.
Yes, sir. Can I have a point of privilege, please?
You may.
I want to call Teresa Lee to the podium and ask her to give us a little update on the splash pad and the ribbon cutting.
Good evening, Councilor.
Good afternoon.
Actually, today, they didn't, yesterday and today, they did some grading around the splash pad and they began, or will begin, to put in the sod. Did that start today?
Thursday.
Thursday. So they are preparing for the ribbon cutting, which, as the mayor told you, will be on July second, right after you all finish your meeting that evening. So the citizens will want you to hurry with your business so they can see it get opened. That's all you need?
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Councilor Boone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have just a couple items. Our next council meeting, first of all, is going to be July the second, at six P.M., and it's the same night as Ms. Lee just stated that they will have the ribbon cutting. So hopefully, the Lord's willing, I will be here for that. But the Fourth of July, I will not be here for that in case I forget to mention it on the second. I will be going out of town for the Fourth of July. And on the Fifth of July, I'm going to be turning six to the Lord's willing somewhere. I wish you well. I do look forward to seeing you on the second, but I will not be here for the Fourth Festivus and I hope all goes well. With that being said, thank you all for being here. Thank you for what you do. You pray for me and I pray for you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.